Jennifer Schisby, I'm just checking, thank you.
Tom, yep, we can hear you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the November twenty-second meeting of the governing body to order. Adam Clark, would you take role?
Dr. Rennie. Mr. Royble. Mr. Seagrave.
Present.
Mr. White.
Present.
Dr. Aldridge.
Present.
Mayor Collins.
Present.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Escobah.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
And Mr. Laborn.
Present.
All members are present, Mayor.
Will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is number four, Consent Agenda. All items listed with the designation of CA are considered to be routine items by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the governing body so requests and support by two other members is received. Any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
Are there any items a member of the governing body would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Nineteen C.
Correct.
Okay, nineteen C has been removed. Dr. Rennie. Nineteen Bravo. Okay, any others? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion. President White, seconded by Dr. Aldridge. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. The consent agenda is approved with nineteen Charlie and nineteen Bravo removed.
Next item is number six, Public Hearing for Limited Retail Liquor License Transfer of Location Application filed with the City Clerk's Office for Amets Post Ten from thirty-eight thirty-nine East Lincoln Way to eighteen twenty Ridge Road, Cheyenne, Wyoming.
All right, we'll open it up to the public. Anyone here to speak to this transfer of a liquor license? Anyone in the audience? All right, anyone in the governing body?
Mr. Mayor, perhaps the clerk could give us a synopsis?
Chris, could you help us, please?
Mayor, Chris Jones, City Clerk. Yes, to Councilman Royble, the applicant is here tonight if you'd have any questions for him, but this is just a transfer of location. They're just moving their physical location to another building.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the governing body? Hearing none, the purpose of the public hearing has been met and we'll assign this item to the Finance Committee.
Next item is number seven, Ordinance on Third Reading, amending the Unified Development Code, UDC, to modify Articles two point one and two point two regarding posted and published notice requirements for divisions of land and zoning applications.
All right, is there anyone in the audience like to speak to this change to our UDC? All right, hearing none. Dr. Rennie.
Mr. Mayor. Recommendation of the Public Service Committee is to approve on third final reading.
Second, seconded by Mr. Cook. Comments from members of the governing body? Hearing none. Adam Clark, would you take role?
Mr. Laborn.
Aye.
Dr. Rennie.
Yes.
Mr. Royble.
Aye.
Mr. Seagrave.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Dr. Aldridge.
Yes.
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Escobah.
I.
And Mr. Johnson.
Yeah.
The ordinance is approved on third and final reading.
Next item is number eight, Ordinance on Third Reading, amending Section fifteen point zero eight point zero three one Building Permit Fees, Exceptions for Incentivization Program of Chapter fifteen point oh eight, International Building Code adopted of Title fifteen Buildings and Construction of the Code of the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming, to reinstate the City of Cheyenne Core Development Incentivization Program.
All right, that was a mouthful. Anyone in the audience like to speak to this? Anyone in the audience? Hearing none. Mr. Mr. Royble.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve on third and final reading and I so move. Second.
Seconded by President White.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Royble.
I moved to amend by substitute dated November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
And Mr. Mayor.
Hang on just a second here, I'm making a note. All right, we have a motion to amend by substitute dated eleven fifteen twenty-one. I need to take that out to the audience, but I want to let them know that we're probably going to ask this council to vote no on that because we have another substitute moving forward. With that being said, is there anyone in the audience like to speak to the amendment dated or the substitute dated eleven fifteen? Mr. Royble.
That was, that was my, my speech that I was going to say.
We'll say it again. Say it again.
And ask us to vote that down and get another amendment.
Okay, so to the council, we do have a new amendment dated eleven twenty-two that we'd prefer to pass, and so our staff has asked us to not vote yes on this one. But asking that, I want to ask you, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
No.
Okay, this amendment fails and we're back on the main motion. Mr. Royble.
Mr. Mayor, moved to amend by substitute dated November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Aldridge. All right, back to the audience again for the amendment. Hearing none, how about from the council?
Mr. Ma-
Oh, Dr. Rennie.
And perhaps Chairman Royble was going to answer my question, but I did read an amendment last night Safari is not letting me in at the moment, so I don't exactly know what is.
Mr. Mayor through you.
Ms. Royble.
Basically, it's almost the same as the last amendment, except we're taking out the part where the city treasurer was to be the one they reported to or doing the reporting. We're putting in the project planning and development director. And then there's the same thing as a sunset date of twenty twenty-five, and then there for us, for the planning and planning department to give us a fiscal or a report for the fiscal year each year up till twenty twenty-five.
Dr. Rennie, does that answer your question?
It does.
Anyone else in the governing body? All right, we're on the amendment. All those in favor, please signify by sending aye. Saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, the amendment is approved with Mr. Johnson voting no. We're back on the main motion. Any other final comments for members of the governing body? Hearing none. Adam Clark, would you?
Let me hear my microphone.
Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, since the amendment already passed, as we learned from what happened in late twenty nineteen, basically, as soon as we have three years of data, you can expect me to probably bring this up in twenty twenty-four with more data to actually remove the sunset clause that we approved.
Dr. Aldridge.
Mayor Collins through you. The reason that I asked for the sunset date to be put in is that I really believe that if we collect data showing that this program is successful in the DDA boundary area, that it really is something that we should utilize in all three wards, Ward two and Ward three and the rest of Ward one. So I'm hopeful that it will be successful and that the data will prove that to be so and that at that point, we can remove that sunset clause.
Mr. Johnson.
Once again, just for clarification, basically, because this is an ordinance, we can make changes to this at any time. This what the concern was, it was brought up, Finance Committee, was that this was going to be holding future councils. Technically, they, they say that we're not supposed to hold future councils liable for our decisions here today, but because this is actually a city ordinance, this is something that can actually be modified by council at any time. That's why I made the statement that I did that in three years after collecting data, because I don't want it to go to the last quarter of twenty twenty-four to be reviewed by a future council in twenty twenty-five, knowing how ordinances were and are, unless somebody actually revives or pays enough attention to reopen this or it's under the city staff at the time of twenty twenty-five being brought forward. At that point, we can make changes to the wards at any time we wanted to. As I had stated in Finance and on second reading, we can basically modify this to Ward two and Ward three at any time. I would appreciate it, just as what we did with this ordinance change, that the actual map was approved by the Planning and Development Department, so we could actually look to see if in Ward two and Ward three, we wanted to focus on specific commercial districts. As we did here, I realized that under Ward one, under the current map, there are some residential zones in there that can take advantage of this program, but once again, being an ordinance, this is something we can modify at any time.
Dr. Aldridge.
Mayor Collins through you. Duly noted.
All right, is there anyone else in the audience like to speak to this ordinance as we've amended it? Hearing none, Adam Clark.
Mr. Johnson.
Just ask for the audience.
Yeah. Yes.
Mr. Laborn.
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Rennie.
No.
Mr. Royble.
Yes.
Mr. Seagrave.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Dr. Aldridge.
Yes.
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Escobah.
The ordinance is approved on third and final reading as amended with Dr. Rennie voting no.
Next item is number nine, Ordinance on Second Reading, Annexing to the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming, Land Located Northeast of the Intersection of Happy Jack, Old Happy Jack Road and Westland Road.
All right, anyone in the audience like to speak to this annexation ordinance? Hearing none. Dr. Rennie.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation Public Service Committee is to approve on second reading and I would so move. Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Comments from members of the governing body? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance is approved on second reading.
Next item is number ten, Ordinance on Second Reading, amending the official zoning map of the City of Cheyenne, changing the zoning classification from County LI Light Industrial to LI Light Industrial for land located northeast of the intersection of Old Happy Jack Road and Westland Road.
All right, is there anyone in the audience like to speak to changing zoning for the land we just passed on second reading of the project? No one? Okay, Dr. Rennie.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Service Committee is also to approve this item on second reading and I would so move. Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Comments from members of the governing body? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? This ordinance is also approved on second reading.
Next item is number eleven, Ordinance on Second Reading, amending the official zoning map of the City of Cheyenne, changing the zoning classification from HR High Density Residential to CB Community Business for land located southeast of the southeast of and adjacent to the intersection of Western Hills Boulevard and No Sage Avenue.
Mr. Seagrave.
I would, I need to declare conflict on this item. I have a business relationship with the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Seagrave is declaring a conflict. Is there anyone in the audience like to speak to the zone change before us? Hearing none. Dr. Rennie.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of Public Service Committee is to approve on second reading and I would so move.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Aldridge. Any comments from members of the governing body? Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay, the ordinance is approved on second reading with Seagrave declaring a conflict. Mr. Cook, voting no.
Next item is number twelve, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Clerk to Sign a Final Plan for Metal Arca State Second Filing, a replay of tract one and a portion of tracts two through nine of Metal Arca State, Cheyenne, Laramie County, Wyoming, located northeast of the, of, adjacent to the intersection of Delraye Boulevard and Whitney Road.
All right, is there anyone in the audience like to speak to this zone change? Please come forward.
Mr. Mayor through you, members of the council, Trey Rennie, ADI Engineering, agent for the applicant. Not a whole lot to add. I think you've all seen this project development multiple times, but just want to say that I am available for questions if there are any.
Thank you, Ms. Rennie. Anyone else in the audience? Hearing none, the other, Dr. Rennie, please.
Mr. Mayor, the Public Services Committee's recommendation was to adopt with one condition, and that condition is that the final plat will not be signed until the development agreement has been approved by the governing body, and I would so move. Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Dr. Rennie.
I just wanted to add, there was no objections from the developer, the applicant to that condition when we were at Public Service Committee.
Okay, any other comments from members of this governing body? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The final pad is approved with the condition of the development agreement needing to be approved before it's signed. Thank you.
Next item was number fourteen, Resolution Certifying the Converse Avenue Reconstruction Plan.
All right, anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Mr. Poppert, welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Randy Poppert. I own the property at the northeast corner of Delraye and Converse, which is involved in this study. There's to take it to its bottom line, there's two solutions for the Delraye intersection proposed in the study. One is the recommended design, one is the alternate design. The recommended design takes half the parking off the property that I own at that corner. So we're greatly against the recommended design and would urge the council to adopt the alternate design. Secondarily, the actual design of that intersection is forthcoming, and we would like the council to make sure that that design comes back to the council before its implementation. Any questions?
Anyone have a question for Mr. Poppert? Randy, thanks for being here. Is there anyone else in the audience like to speak to this? All right, hearing none. Mr. Royble.
No.
Oh, I apologize, it's Dr. Rennie. Yep, it is. I have Dr. Royble here, I got it screwed up, so. Dr. Rennie, please.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Comments from members of the governing body?
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Rennie.
It was, obviously, as you might all assume, Mr. Poppert spoke at Public Services Committee also. We debated this at length, and what we were told was that both design options at this point, we're not being asked to decide. Both design options will be sent forward, and the next step in this process will be for the engineering department to send out an RFP and hire a firm to further evaluate the Converse Avenue and take the plans from, I think, thirty-five percent to sixty-five percent. And, and at that point, probably their recommendation, they will have a recommendation in there as to what they think the best engineering choice is, and then we will maybe perhaps be our decision point on which option we take.
And Dr. Rennie, do you know, I guess many times it doesn't come back to the governing body, we just get the contract to approve it at the end. Was there an effort, I guess, to bring the design back for further discussion before your committee?
Mr. Mayor, there was no discussion. I think the assumption was usually we get, I assume, and perhaps, you know, Mr. Mason or Mr. Cobb can clarify that, but I think usually we do get to approve the final plan.
Mr. Mason, do you want to come in? I guess at this point, what I'm trying to understand is, I guess the way I've always seen it in the past was, it just comes back to the governing body for approval of the contract to bid to build whatever we do. Do we actually get a chance to weigh in on the, the design alternatives at some point in this process?
Mr. Mayor, council members, Tom Mason, Director of the MPO. This resolution and the plan for you tonight is addressing Converse Avenue from Delraye North to Carlson.
Right.
So the next question and step that you're referring to is what city engineering will be doing shortly. The, we have, we found out during the development of this plan that the Dry Creek culvert or bridge structure is in bad need of being replaced. So to do that and to implement the recommendations for the corridor on north of the Delraye and Dry Creek intersection, the engineering department intends to go out to hire a consultant to do the design of the entire intersection of Delraye with Converse, and that includes every leg of the intersection north, south, east and west to go as far as Mason Way. And that would be a design project that will follow this corridor plan. So city engineering will be hiring a consultant to figure out the best engineering solution for the entire intersection. Normally, it's the case that when engineering is moving through a final design, they have public meetings. And Tom Cobb, your engineer, would surely include the council, as he will the entire community, on the design that is developing for this entire intersection reconstruction. And if Tom Cobb wants or needs to add to it, I know he's online.
So, Ms. Mason, it will not come back for another vote. The, the design will go through. There'll be public meetings, but it won't come back to this body for an approval until, at some point in the future, we either approve the plan or the financing to build it.
You know, the engineering that will be taking place will go through a public process, and I'm sure if the governing body wants to see and be involved with the development of that design, you just simply have to ask city engineering to bring it to you before it's, you know, gone all the way to the hundred percent.
Okay, thank you.
It could be brought to you at different stages of the design.
Understood, thank you. Any other comments from members of the audience? How about from the governing body?
Mayor.
Mr. Laborn.
Well, having followed this in the Public Service Committee and hearing what Mr. Poppert has to say, I certainly, reviewing the plan itself, obviously, there's a lot of good recommendations there in the whole plan. When you get to Mr. Poppert's property, I think when we adopt a plan that takes away his parking without really considering that future use of the property or the use today of the property, and we have an alternative in limbo, I don't think that's a good plan. I think that that's the point of this plan is to come up with a solution that deals with the adjacent property owners, and certainly, I'm sure we're all aware of issues at that intersection, particularly with the heavy trucks that go to the post office there. So I just don't see that this is an efficient or effective way for us to do the plan. I think that Mr. Poppert's concerns are serious ones that we should take very seriously at this point. So I certainly don't agree that this is the best way to approach this matter or that it's efficient and cost effective. Evidently, we're going to replan in some way what we've already looked at extensively. The alternative seems to me to be more sensible. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Dr. Aldridge.
Thank you, Mayor Collins. Through you, I would agree with my colleague from Ward one. I think that having a Converse corridor plan before we know what the engineering needs are going to be at that intersection, which is going to heavily impact that plan, I would assume, from what I've read that's been provided by the MPO, that I think we're putting the cart before the horse, and so for that reason, I'm going to be voting no tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Royble.
See, Tom, or Engineer Cobb's online. Could he maybe hear from me?
Can you bring Mr. Cobb up, please, Michael? I know he's on his way. Hi, Tom.
Mr. Mayor.
Are you following, Tommy, the conversation so far?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I did not hear Councilman Royble's question. Could he rephrase that, please?
Mr. Royble.
Just that I saw that you were online, and I thought we'd like to hear from you, your, your perspective on this. Yes, sir. I, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council, I, I guess I would reiterate some of what Mr. Mason has indicated that my intention would be that this would go through a full public process. I think that we have to be careful about generalizing. This, this is one design detail in the very corner. The plan is a very complete plan, which includes storm sewer, elements of the roadway, intersection improvements, all the way through the corridor. We have to keep in mind, this is one single corner at the intersection. I have two alternatives that I need to look at in the future. We also could implement the CFI arrangement. This was just on the north side of the intersection for this particular plan. So keep in mind again, we could implement a CFI, which is a counterflow intersection, which is previously recommended in a previous plan by Mr. Mason's group. And additionally, this corner, as I indicated in the Public Services Committee, we're, we're overputting too much weight on the, the size and radius of that particular corner. We could force the trucks. It was done as a result of the US Postmaster indicating they were going to increase to another pup on their truck. We could take them a different direction and significantly lower the radius of that intersection, which would have far less impact on Mr. Poppert's property. And I've also indicated on a sidebar conversation to Mr. Poppert that I am, of course, would include him exclusively in this as we work through this design process, and I'm very cognizant of his issues, and I do not want to affect his business. That's all I would say, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Mr. Cook.
Mr. Mayor, I guess I, I think I share your, your concerns, Mr. Mayor, and those spoken of, Dr. Rennie and others. I'm not sure procedurally what we would need to do per se, but I'm, I'm all well and good with the, you know, the, the public comment process, the public meetings, those kinds of things, but I think, obviously, just due to the sensitivity of this project, and that frankly, it affects everybody. It doesn't matter the ward. I mean, this, this affects really folks from the entire city. So my hope, Mr. Mayor, would be that really folks from the entire city. So, my hope, Mr. Mayor, would be that whether it's for final approval, the final design, or whatever, my hope is that this, this does formally come back to us for at least some kind of, some kind of vetting, because I, I, I do believe just with the importance of this project, I believe that's, that's needed. So, I would advocate for that.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Rennie.
I have a question for Engineer Cobb, if he's still listening.
Michael's bringing him back. Mr. Cobb.
I'm here, sir.
Mr. Cobb, is there any reason, if we were to amend this and ask that it come back to the council at a, at a certain stage, is sixty-five percent, ninety percent, what would be your preference? Or do you have one?
Mr. Mayor, through you to Dr. Rennie. I, I don't have a preference. I would say that, uh, I would say, once we get a, a consultant on board, sir, that we would then come back if there was a change in the concept plan and what their alternative would be. Because again, we have not selected that consultant. I'd be happy to do so.
Well, I can either make an amendment, or I can just take, or ask you at that point when the, when the recommendations come in through the engineers, would you present it to us again, please?
Mr. Mayor, through you to Dr. Rennie. Absolutely, sir. I'll bring it back through.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. White. Okay. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, when you're ready. Mr. Escobar.
Through you. Uh, I'm not sure what other route postal trucks would take, but looking at the design for that corner, it looks like where the bushes are, that those would come out. How many parking spots are we talking about?
Mr. Popert, could you maybe share with us the number of parking spaces you're concerned about?
It's either six or seven, and that's half our parking for that building.
Thank you, Mr. Popert. Mr. Escobar, any follow? Mr. Johnson.
Historically, since looking at plans, this is actually a thirty-five percent design, not for construction. From what I've experienced in the past is that once it gets up to sixty percent, I believe that I thought they brought it before the governing body, anywhere between sixty and sixty-seven percent. Um, once actually the consultant had done their work in regards to that, because it looks like per the direction of what takes place with these design concepts is that thirty-five percent and is even included on the map, that it's thirty-five percent not for construction. So, once the actual sixty percent got, that that's where it would come up for construction designs. And so, I believe, from what I've experienced in the past with design concepts, that once it gets between sixty and sixty-seven percent, I thought it was actually brought before the council, before it went to its construction phase.
That's the, the commitment I heard from, uh, from Mr. Cobb.
Mr. Mayor, through you to Councilman Johnson. Sir, we usually don't bring it back through based on that because the plan had been vetted. But I'm happy to do so with this. Obviously, this impact, this is the most, the most used intersection in the city right now. I have no problem with that, sir.
Did that answer your question, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, mine was more of a comment, just the way that it actually took place, according to the way that this process actually went.
Thank you. All right. Is there any other comments or questions from members of this governing body? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
So, we have Mr. Cook, Mr. Aldridge, or Madam, Dr. Aldridge, and Mr. Laborne is no's. The resolution is adopted.
Next item is nineteen B, Professional Services Agreement between the City of Cheyenne and Plan One Architects for the Level One, Level Two feasibility study for Fifteenth Street Corridor Plan.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak to this Professional Services Agreement? Hearing none. Mr. Royble.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation the Finance Committee is to approve an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars, and I so moved.
Second.
Seconded by President White. Comments from members of the governing body? Dr. Rennie.
I wanted to discuss this because in reading through, if you go to feasibility study scope, item L, VMA, on page eleven, talks about developing the funding sources for the case on implementation. And one of the funding sources mentioned is the six penny funds for Reed Avenue. I assume we're not going to rate funds from Reed Avenue, which were approved by the voters in order to extend it on this project. And if that was our intention, we shouldn't. So, Mr. Mayor, at this point, I would like to amend the agreement to leave the reference to six penny funds for Reed Avenue.
Second.
So, it's been moved by Dr. Rennie and seconded by Mr. Laborne to remove in feasibility study of scope, letter L, which is, or not the, not the whole thing, but, but just the part that talks about the Reed Avenue Corridor Funds. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak to that? How about from the governing body?
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Rennie.
I think the motion is fairly straightforward and simple. The fact is that Reed Avenue was a six penny project approved in the last six penny. And even at the time, we do, we, we did, we probably didn't have adequate funding to complete it. And so, the fact that it's not completed seems to me to be wrong to even consider taking this fund for two reasons. A, as I said, it's not completed. B, that Reed Avenue was voted on by the voters. And I think we've had the ability to use new way of funds to another area. Matter of fact, I, and even the same line references sixteen overages, and I think those overages should be, and if you discuss that at the time, they're probably done with their projects like Reed Avenue. Maybe those overages may not be directly controlled by those projects. So, anyway, that's the rationale for my amendment.
Dr. Rennie, the only thing I can think of was where Reed Avenue and Fifteenth Street come together. There may be some synergies to do some projects on that corner. But I, I can't speak for the, the folks who wrote this. So, we'll just take it as you do. Any other comments from members of the committee?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Okay. Give me, actually, can you go first? I'm going to pull up the county clerk's website, because I have some qualifications. Go ahead.
Mr. Laborne.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad to speak to this because I, I think it's just a, an oversight, basically, that was, should be removed. But in that regard, and as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, it's that connection between this project and the Reed Avenue Corridor that is of grave concern to myself and other people, particularly the other members of the Greenway Committee who were appointed in a subcommittee to review those matters. It is very important that what conceived of here connects to what was conceived of previously there on the corridor. It is really, really critical that we get the corridor plan moving. It's installed, and I really think that it's time for the the Steering Committee of the Reed Avenue Corridor to meet again, review the process, and include in their discussion, as we discussed in the Greenway Committee, how that connection is made. So, certainly removing this makes a lot of sense. It just isn't realistic to think that we could ever use that money in this way. But those projects need to be compatible. They need to be considered comprehensively. And I'll have further comment after the amendment.
Mr. Johnson.
Okay, so I, I get when this was written, it was most likely before our previous six penny. So, on Proposition Twelve, because I agree what Dr. Rennie says in regards to the, the past six penny in regards to that, because it wasn't specifically mentioned for this, but just on the three and a half million dollars, it was approved under Proposition Twelve. It basically says to complete community at large projects such as Downtown Hall, formerly Mary's Bake Shop, the Reed Avenue Corridor, Bellbar Ranch, and Hitching Post. When we did Proposition Twelve earlier this year, the language was left vague on purpose for flexibility in regards to what we wanted to do with Proposition Twelve. So, even though it may not fall under the the past Reed Avenue Corridor that was passed by the voters, could not we have flexibility under the current Proposition Twelve that passed a couple of weeks ago? And I guess if that's to the city attorney's office, or in regards to the flexibility of that, because it looks like, under the current language, we may not be able to use it under the past proposition, but we might be able to use it under the current proposition.
Mr. Johnson, I think we would all agree that the six point five million dollars or six million dollars that was put for downtown might, might be approved or appropriate, and the three point five million dollars also might be appropriate.
So, I guess to the sponsor of the amendment, what course of action do you want to take? Are we going to follow the Proposition Twelve that was currently passed? Or are we going to put the restrictions on the previous Reed Avenue Corridor? What direction do we want to head?
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Rennie.
The purpose of the amendment was strictly in reference to the Reed Avenue Corridor funds from the previous six penny tax. That was specifically assigned to Reed Avenue. That's how it was presented to the voters. And I don't think the amendment has any impact on the most recent six penny and the flexibility that's in the two propositions that were part of that.
Mr. Johnson, does that answer your question?
It's still kind of vague. Do you have anything? Because I know this is kind of your baby. Do you, where do you come on this board on where we're at with our regards to our six penny language?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Seagre.
It's my recollection that, that the intent was to coordinate the projects. If that language is, is too vague, then certainly we can follow this amendment, but I, I do believe the amendment should have the language of the, I believe it was the twenty seventeen six penny. If we could add twenty seventeen to the amendment, I think that would clarify it.
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Rennie.
That doesn't clarify anything. I'm trying to remove the reference to Reed Avenue, so Reed Avenue Spot Tax Funds, which was twenty seventeen. There was no reference to, there was no specific Reed Avenue Spot Tax Funds in, which is redundant, but spot funds in twenty twenty-one.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Seagre.
I'll have to vote no on the amendment if we can't clarify it. Thank you.
Any other comments from members of the governing body?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cook.
And I'm not sure if we have a member of staff here that could answer this question. And I don't recall, I guess, basically, my question is, is this area, was this area in question considered to be part of the quote-unquote Reed Avenue Corridor area, Mr. Mayor, or you know what I mean? I'm not sure I'm saying that correctly, but I mean, if, if this, if this area that we're, that we're wondering about, you know, was it, was it originally contemplated to be part of Reed Avenue Corridor? If it was, then, then the funding would be appropriate for that area. But if it wasn't contemplated, then I would agree with my colleague more, too.
Mr. Skinner, do we have someone, maybe Mr. Bloom, that might be able to answer that question?
Uh, we do have Charles on the line. We also have Plan One Architects with their hand raised. I don't know if they'd be able to speak to this.
Let's ask Mr. Bloom first, if you would.
Yes, Mayor, members of council, Charles Bloom. Just reading up on this a little bit more, this is a, the implementation of the Fifteenth Street Corridor there, where the ultimate goal of this is to make sure it does have a true connection with the Reed Road Corridor. As identified in the scope of the attachment, there are several items there. Several of these items look at how the different rail vehicles, rail cars that are located around the community can be incorporated, collected, and brought into place, and how they can be arranged in the community, and how we can involve the neighbors and residents and business owners in the area to make sure we have a big collaborative effort, so everyone is working together there. Again, this is, uh, being facilitated by Visit Cheyenne, and Plan One is the architecture firm that would be doing that. I would ask them to expand a little bit more on their scope and provide some more additional details about what they are proposing that, and a vision of this, of this plan to be.
Thank you.
Uh, go ahead. Let's give that one more try. We got some feedback the last go-around.
Yeah.
Sorry, we keep getting some feedback. Is there any other audio you have on in the background, perhaps?
Can you hear me now?
Very well, thank you.
Yes, much better.
Go ahead, please.
Hello? Go ahead if you're ready.
Sounds like we're not going to have Plan One Architects on.
No.
Thank you. Dr. Rennie.
Mr. Mayor, if I will, does everyone have a, a copy of the, of the attachment, the scope of services, up in front of them there? Um, we could quickly walk through that. There's letters A through N, which are really the feasibility of the project. Really what it is, is it's a, a discussion, everything we've talked about so far with this rail project is just taking all those pieces and laying them out on paper and identifying all the next steps. Number one is item A, which is to identify all of those rail vehicles, those rail cars that Union Pacific is looking to divest themselves from, trying to identify and work with the neighbors as to where we're going to permanently put those items. We will also work with different community partners, those community partners, that we could look at ways to fund and revitalize any rail cars that could be used for businesses. They could be used for business incubators, restaurants, those different items there, as well as where can we temporarily store these during that time from when we've identified those, so when they'll be put on the ground. That could take a, a little bit of time, so we'd be working with leads in a facility at Chey, at Swan Ranch, to allow those to be, um, to be stored there. Again, also, the ability to work with the other organizations, DDA, leads, Visit Cheyenne, and the other folks that would want to be a partnership to identify tenants for the rail cars, to truly create that unique experience for the community here of Cheyenne. Also, looking at replacing the fencing along the tracks and have better advantage points to see what activity is going on in the yard. This, again, would look at, how do we fund this? What would the estimated cost be to give us a good picture? An overall, uh, discussion with the gunslingers as to the best location where they're placed. Is there alternative? Is there another way to incorporate them to the, the area? And the review of parking in the area and some of the other many's that are in the area. There are later phases that are further down, which is the walkway over the tracks. We all understand how that has gone when it comes to working with Union Pacific. That could take some time, but that is another element of this agreement, as well as an agreement with working with Union Pacific on the roundhouse renovation. Again, one of the really important parts of this entire project is to make sure there's community engagement, engagement with property owners, as lots of property owners have changed in the area. So, we can ensure that trying to create something that complements the Reed Rail project and make compliments. and make complements other, um, items that are going on in the downtown area. Um, I hope.
Charles, I have to interrupt you for just a second. What we're working on though is just the, uh,
Item L.
The amendment, and the amendment was just to remove the, the language that talked about the six penny funds for Reed Avenue. So.
Oh, yes, sir.
Work on that, that part of the, uh, of the agreement.
And that being said, Mr. Mayor, I, I do, I do appreciate the, the information that Mr. Bloom provided, and I think we all do. And, and I guess maybe we don't know the answer to this question, but, um, I was just hoping for some clarification on whether or not, when the language from 2017, 2016, 2017, I guess, I was just hoping to get some clarification on, was any of that 15th Street area contemplated to be a part of the Reed Avenue corridor? Going back to whether or not we need to make this a member. Now, that, that's what I was hoping to, to clarify, but it doesn't appear that we, we have that, that answer. But, uh, anyway, uh, Mr. Bloom, thank you. And, uh, that's, that's really all I have to say, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Escobar.
Having the 15th Street, uh, corridor plan come on line after the Reed Avenue corridor plan. I think there is a connection between the two. You look at the history of it, uh, the Burlington Northern used the Reed Avenue corridor to connect to the Union Pacific, uh, mainland there on 15th Street. And when we came along later and decided to do, uh, the rail experience plan, to me, it seems like both projects are connected and I would want to get the amendment.
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Rennie.
I have no issues with the 15th Street corridor plan. 15th Street has had huge potential that I think it's never met through the years. All I'm saying is that in 2017, we went to the voters asking for three and a half, four million dollars. I forget the exact amount.
Four million.
For, to develop the Reed Avenue corridor. And there was never a mention of 15th Street. It does not matter if they're related now or not. We did not present it that way to the voters, and we need to defend and protect the sanctity of that vote and make sure we keep our word to the electorate. And that's, that's my only point. All I'm asking is that we remove any reference, the one slight reference to Reed Avenue corridor funds, which were specifically voted on in the 2017 spot. Beyond that, I have questions about whether we can apply the overages, and I hope our attorney will look at that at some point, because in practice, we've always said that those overages could be used only for those projects that were on that ballot.
All right, so we're on the amendment. Is there anybody else who wants to speak to the amendment? Mr. Labor.
Well, as our discussion here has brought forward, I'd like to, uh, make a friendly amendment that might help clarify this by putting the date of 2017 six penny funds, strike that reference, which I believe is incorrect. And, uh, I totally agree that it's so important that we're clear about which funds go where and once they're approved by the voters. So with the sponsor of the amendment, uh, mind, including, uh, that 2017 prior to the six penny wording there, I think that would clarify the matter to the degree we need.
Dr. Rennie.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I want to remove the six penny wording, six penny funds for Reed Avenue, I guess the only way I would accept that or, or fill my amendment down and then change it to say excluding 2017 six penny funds for Reed Avenue. If everybody agree with that, then go down my amendment and let's remake the amendment.
Let's do that, all right. So let's, Dr. Rennie's would like to vote down this amendment and we'll remake it in a different way. That'll be more clear. All those in favor of his amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
All right. Amendment fails, Dr. Rennie.
In page 11, line L, paragraph L, in the second to the last line, to amend by adding the language excluding 2017 in front of six penny funds for Reed Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by President White. We'll go out to the audience. Anybody in the audience want to speak to this amendment? About from the governing body. Mr. Johnson.
Okay, since I have 2017 pulled up, $4 million to the City of Cheyenne's West Edge District to construct infrastructure and enhancements and apply for additional grant monies supporting development, including the Reed Avenue corridor. So going back to 2017, it says including it, but not exclusive to it. So in regards to this, going back to our original languages, are we really forbidden from using even the 2017, because it just says including it? It looks like this was to construct infrastructure and enhancements, apply for additional grant monies, supporting the West Edge District, which this looks like it might apply to. So are we back to square one again in regards to the way we constructed our language in 2017?
I think to answer that question would be if we support this amendment, yes, we would be excluding it. Anyone else? Mr. Labor.
Mr. Mayor, while I speak in favor of the specificity that's here in this amended, uh, action, I think it is very important that we separate those specific items on one, um, sales tax ballot from another sales tax ballot. I would say that, uh, the good news here is that we do have these other funding mechanisms in place, uh, as of our recent sales tax election. So this is just a matter of clarity, and I think it's, it's important clarity so that we recognize when that Reed Avenue corridor was passed and what that fund was directed towards. And it certainly doesn't, uh, harm either project in any way to, to have that clarity. So I think we should approve this amendment and move on. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Seigret.
I'll speak against the amendment. Uh, as Mr. Johnson pointed out, uh, the funding from 2017 was for the West Edge. Reed Avenue was a part of that comment, but not the entire West Edge project. If there's synergies between the two projects, if there's a way to, um, coordinate, then I don't think those funds should be eliminated as long as, as long as the West Edge is involved with, with the 15th Street project. So at this point, I, why handicap? Let's see what, see what comes of the study and what they bring forward. So, uh, I understand, I understand the desire to, um, protect the voters, but they, but the entire project was not just the Reed Avenue corridor. Thank you.
All right, council, anybody else?
Yes, sir, when you're ready.
Mr. Johnson.
Okay, so there, I guess, to justify why I'm voting no, on the amendment is strictly on one word in paragraph L, that it says potential funding sources, so that's not certifiable. So after reading 2017 and 2021, because of that word, potential funding sources in paragraph L, I think that those basically are saying that they're not exclusive to those funding mechanisms, but potentially are available just by reading the language in 2017 and 2021. I think we actually could use the funding mechanism from both six penny ballots to actually cover this, just on the way the language was written.
Mr. White.
Mr. Mayor, speaking in favor of the amendment, I said on the RFP committee when we, um, after the 2017 ballot and, and the, uh, the committee at that time did a scoring to, uh, hire a contractor to look at a first feasibility study for Reed Avenue corridor. There was, and, and Mr., my colleague from Ward One, Mr. Labor, attended a couple of those meetings too. There was, I don't recall any mention of any six penny funds, uh, being used for 15th Street. 15th Street was just a glimmer in the eye at, at that point. So, um, I think, I think it's important to, um, provide the needed clarification that this amendment provides, and I'll be voting in favor of it. Thank you.
Anyone else in the governing body? Dr. Aldridge.
Thank you, Mayor Collins, through you. I think that, uh, sometimes even if things are allowable, it's about the optics. And I think that, um, we've commonly referred to those funds that were collected, um, for the West Edge as the Reed Street Corridor or Reed Avenue Project or the West Edge, not, um, necessarily going all the way to 15th Street. And I think that, um, even though legally and, um, based on what was passed, if we look at the literal verbiage, that it might be allowable, but I don't know that it's, um, in our best interest and for the sake of transparency and trying to follow what the voter's intent was.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Escobar.
I do want to clarify my earlier comments, but what I meant was that even the language the way it was, that money could be used on the connection of Reed 215. So that's why I voted against it.
Anyone else? All right, the amendment is to exclude the use of 2017 six penny sales tax money, um, on this project. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
I see the hands on the nose. Mr. Seigret, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Escobar knows the motion passes, or the amendment passes. We're back on the main. Other comments from members of this governing body?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Labor.
Well, I hope that this, especially when you say it doesn't, uh, confuse this issue, because this is such an important and worthwhile effort that we've talked about and looked at and built towards for years, um, maybe even decades. Utilizing 15th Street and bringing the railroad into, uh, cooperative effort with us is just so important and so worthwhile. Uh, this is going to really give us the answers that we need to talk to the railroad and to really support what is naturally, organically going on on 15th Street, which is investment.
Right.
Um, there is a number of major projects underway right now, particularly at 15th Street and Bent on the West Edge there. And I would, uh, really, really speak in favor of passing this so that Dominic Bravo and the Visit Cheyenne DDA can really begin to move on this so that we can have the answers we need. And furthermore, I want to point out that, as we discussed here earlier, and I certainly believe that reserving that 2017 money for the Reed Avenue corridor is important. But as has been pointed out, we have match money, we have road money, and we have, uh, downtown, uh, development district funds in that six penny. So fortunately, uh, we're really not in the position where we have to, uh, look to utilize, uh, funds that were intended for other projects, even if they're adjacent projects, and, and that connection is so important. I'm glad that's being recognized here tonight. But, uh, this is really a huge step for our city. It's, uh, the continuation of things we've talked about, and it's going to give us the answers we need to be able to put those funds together and eventually, of course, connect those projects. But, uh, let, let's get this one figured out down 15th Street, and then I'm sure we can, uh, work together to connect up those projects and make, uh, those long-term ambitions come to fruition. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The professional service agreement is approved as amended. All right, is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak to this? All right, hearing none. Mr. Robel.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the finance committee is to approve an amount of $1,200,000 that I saw moved, second. And Mr. Mayor.
Seconded by President White.
Moved to amend by substitute, substitute dated November 19th, 2021.
Okay. All right, so it's been moved to amend by substitute, seconded by, is that Mr. Johnson? All right. I'll take it out to the audience. Uh, is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak to the amendment? I'd ask our attorney, because I, I asked for maybe one clarification before the meeting. If you could talk about that, please.
Good evening, um, Mr. Mayor, members of the governing bodies. Stephanie Boster, Cheyenne City Attorney. And what you've got before you is a development agreement between the city and Mr. Chamberlain with Swagler Construction. Uh, this development agreement has gone through a number of drafts. It's been a collaborative process, and the one on Friday is the most recent draft. That one has been through the financing bank, um, as well as the developer and city staff. Staff would recommend an additional, uh, revision to the development agreement with regard to paragraph nine, subsection B on page four. Uh, the intent of, um, paragraph nine, subsection B, is for the, uh, developer to assign to the lender reimbursements from the city. I think it would be more clear if, uh, there were an addition to that paragraph. And let me find it really quick. I, I'll just read it, I think that might be the most helpful. Developer grants conveys and assigns to lender the right to receive all reimbursements from the city for the additional and reasonable costs incurred for developer work. And then I would add comma, from the tax increment allocation generated by the property, comma, as additional security for the loan granted from the lender to developer.
Thank you. Our treasurer was concerned that we didn't want to leave any doubt that the money that we would be owing the lender would be only the money that came from the increment and not other monies from the general fund, even though this, this development agreement says it everywhere. And that was the reason for, uh, the proposal to amend our amendment. Dr. Aldridge.
Mayor Collins, through you, I just want to make sure, when that was read, it was read as, developer grants conveys and assigns to lender the right to receive all reimbursements from the city for the additional and reasonable. Is it actually additional or is it actual?
And reasonable.
Mr. Mayor, through you, I think it's the actual.
Okay, so, okay. It, it's as it's written, not as it was read.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, would it be reasonable to make a friendly amendment to my amendment to include that?
Stephanie, why would you, would it be better just to amend the, the amendment? Or how would you suggest we do that?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, through you, I think, uh, friendly amendment would be appropriate.
Okay.
Okay, and Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have that language.
Mr. Johnson, is that okay with you? Is the second to add the language, uh, as our attorney just read it to us?
So you want to, sorry, I'll turn on my mics. So you actually want to do additional slash actual? Is that what you want to actually have it state or?
No.
Uh, actual instead of, uh, Mr. Mayor, through you, to Councilman Johnson, I would, I meant to say actual rather than additional.
So it'd be on the third line, uh, after the second word comma, there'd be additional language that would be added. That just clarifies that the money that the lender could get could only come from the tax increment financing provided through this development. And we have the exact language, if you want to read it again.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind reading.
Yeah, if you want to read it, so that, because the way it read, the way it sounded like you stated it, that it was just a turn of phrase that you actually meant to say for the actual and reasonable cost and not additional, so the way that the language reads, which part are we adding it? Are you, are you actually saying?
Could you just read, read it again?
Yeah, read it again.
Sure, yeah, thank you. Um, I'm after developer work on the third line, comma, from the actual, uh, from the actual tax increment allocation generated by the, the property, comma, as additional security for the loan granted from the lender.
as additional security for the loan granted from the lender.
Here, second, I have no issues with that. Okay, so we've got a friendly amendment. So now the amendment before us, gate 11, 1921. Again, I'll go back to the audience, make sure there's no questions from the audience. How about from the members of the governing body? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, amendment is approved and we're back on the main motion. Comments from members of the governing body? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The development agreement is approved as amended. Your microphone on.
Mayor ran out of batteries. Time is 21A vouchers report.
Anyone here that'd like to speak to the vouchers? In the audience or on the governing body? All right, next item, please.
21B revenue report.
Anyone in the audience that'd like to speak to the revenue report? How about from the governing body? Next item, please.
21C notice of an emergency procurement. In accordance with the city of Cheyenne purchasing policy, an emergency procurement has been authorized by Mayor Collins for the purchase of a replacement lighting console for the Cheyenne Civic Center. As an, as the existing console has failed beyond repair, the emergency procurement has been authorized to Brown Note Productions for $51,097.19 other business.
Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak on your other business? All right, hearing none. How about from members of the governing body? Mr. Labor.
Can we have an explanation as to the nature of this emergency?
Teresa Moore, Director of Community Recommence. That's kind of loud. When we were, as you are aware, that the equipment at the Civic Center is, is very, very old. We have been fundraising to, to purchase a new lighting console, but it failed prior to us meeting our goal. So it, I think it was, maybe we had an event scheduled and it failed that day. And so that became our emergency is that we, we knew we were on the edge. We knew it was old. We had been working to replace it. We just didn't raise enough funds to be able to buy it in a, in a timely fashion, if you will. So that created an emergency. Our, we had many events scheduled at Civic Center, as you were aware, and so we needed to have the lighting console. It operates essentially all of the lights on the stage, so that is the nature of the emergency.
Mr. Labor, if I could, one of the things that happened was if we went through the process to buy it, we would have to have rented the console for the shows that we currently have at a cost of more than $10,000 over the next, you know, 45 days or so. And then we would have had to buy it for $50,000. And so the thought was if we could do it right away, we'd save that $10,000 in rental because we wouldn't have to rent one. We could just buy the one that we would have bought through the process.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And what is the funding mechanism specifically?
Mr. Mayor, to Councilman Labor, and we are using the shuttered venue funding in addition to the money that we had fundraised.
Thank you.
Doctor Aldridge.
Thank you, Mayor Collins, through you, to Teresa. So the $51,097.19 is in addition to the money that you raised? Or is that taken into account the money that you raised?
Mayor, to Councilman Aldridge, it is the total. That is the total.
Any other comments on your other business?
Yeah, just a follow-up, since she's still up here. So I guess for clarification, the reason we had it as an emergency procurement was strictly because of our own guidelines in regards to the mayor not to exceed purchases over $35,000, and that's why it was done as an emergency procurement, because I think that would probably be lost on the community on why all of a sudden there was a notice of emergency procurement. So following our goal and guidelines, that's the way I understood it, that you had to put this on our agenda as pretty much an emergency purchase. So it didn't go through the voucher process, it didn't go through everything else. Because it exceeded $35,000, this had to be put on our agenda unless I'm mistaken. Is that the reason it's actually on our agenda, just for clarification to the public?
I believe that's correct.
Mayor, if I might also clarify is that we did, normally it would be an official bid process. We did get quotes and bids from other companies before awarding it, so we did have that information.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me? This is TJ Bartlebore.
Yes, TJ.
Sorry for chiming in here. This is TJ, Purchasing Manager for the city of Cheyenne. Just to further add on to what's been discussed already, and to kind of to speak to what Councilman Johnson was requesting some information on. The, the bid process, if we were to go through our normal full-length bid process, we wouldn't be able to make this purchase until the later, very late part of January of next year, which was another main driving factor for why this emergency procurement was preceded with. Without pursuing it as an emergency procurement, the Civic Center wouldn't be able to have shows until we had ordered it at the end of January, and then we would have still had that lead time then. So that was another huge contributing factor for why we pursued it this way.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlebore. Any other questions? How about other items on your other business? All right, hearing none. We're adjourned. Thank you.